Hi Lydia.
Hey Kirsten, how are you this evening?
I'm good, how are you?
Pretty well, can you hear me? Okay.
I can hear you fine, yeah.
Alright, great.
Well, hi.
Hey Eric.
That was exuberant, Eric.
Yes.
Happy holidays to everybody, everyone's had a good, good holiday weekend.
Yeah, you too.
Yes, indeed. I got you.
I am calling in remotely without a computer, so.
Your remote is remote?
Using an iPad, we'll see how well the sharing works. Screen sharing and such.
If you need one of us to step in, let me know.
Why do I have a feeling that um, um, this may be it?
I don't, I don't think Colton was at our last meeting, was he? So I don't know if he-
A while, has he?
I think he was out of town, so I don't know if he weighed in on whether he could attend tonight or not, I know Rich said he couldn't.
Colton relayed to me before the holidays that he was gonna be submitting a letter to the Borough Manager about stepping down. I don't know if he did that officially.
Yeah, he told me that he was planning to do that, I haven't seen anything official either. Um, which is why it wasn't on the agenda, um, so I didn't have any official notification, but I thought he might give us notice tonight if he were here.
Yeah, I'm not sure, maybe he, he did that paperwork and you know, assumed the Borough Manager would let us know or something, uh, that it's official.
I don't think there's a whole lot of paperwork to do.
Well, just submitting a, a letter, you know, with your statement.
You don't even show up to say bye, gosh.
I mean, I'm sure he would, I, it is, it is a holiday week right now.
I'm totally, yeah.
It's a timing for everybody.
Completely kidding, alright.
Well, I will go ahead and share my screen, see if, oh, I can't share my screen, it says only the host can share. And I'm not the host.
Let me see if I can claim host.
It's usually not an issue, I mean, I often-
Yep, I can, here we go. So, I can claim host, well, we'll see, now it's forcing me to sign it, I don't have that sign.
Hey Colton.
Alright, so nobody is able to share this, to share their screen?
No, because I don't have the six-digit key.
Do we think, do we want to be able to share the screen? We don't have anyone else online here, the only thing we would share is the agenda.
Right, which I can-
And we can talk through that very clearly for the recording purposes.
I'm in the Google Doc, so, looks like Lydia's in.
Because I'm remote, I don't have the login with me. To log out and log in again with the Crafton account.
Colton, are you in the Google Doc? We really need to enable chat on this account. The Google Doc is in your, um, in your email from earlier today. I have no other means by which I can get it to you, because chat is disabled.
I've done this before, I've joined under my own account though, I, I often don't join as the Crafton Borough, I don't know why it's not letting me share now. Um, but if we're comfortable not, not sharing, none of us can share, then should we go ahead and just start our meeting?
There's, there's eight items on the agenda, we can speak through them pretty easily.
Yeah. Alright, well, so let's go ahead and get started, first item, call to order. Um, it's 6:34. Go ahead and open the meeting. Um, 6:34, we'll go ahead and do roll call, our Secretary Rich Kramer's not here tonight. But, looks like there are several of you in the document, we'll put our notes together from that. Um, can we do a verbal roll call, Kirsten Compatello, I'm here. Uh, Lydia?
Lydia Herring's here.
Al Chef's here, sorry.
Colton, do you have audio?
No, you don't have audio.
We can see that Colton is in the meeting, but we can't hear him.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes sir.
Yeah, we got you.
That works, alright, thanks.
Alright, can you stay here for the roll call?
Yep, I'm here, Colton Chandler's here.
Alright, moving on to item number three, our citizen comments, we have no citizens on the line right now. So we'll come back to that at the end. Um, and that takes us to our next big item here, item number four on the agenda is the zoning project for Crafton Borough. Um, to be done jointly along with Ingram Borough. Uh, the grant funding was awarded, Lydia, do you wanna talk about that at all? You know, you shared the news with our Planning Commission, but do you wanna put that on the records?
Yeah, I had spoken with Nick McArath. I think it was maybe early December, and he relayed verbally that we had, um, been awarded the the DCED map grant jointly with Ingram. And they award up to fifty percent of professional services associated with revising our zoning ordinances. And he said, give him a few weeks to get the contract, um, put together and send it on to the borough. And in the meantime, I got our Borough Manager Doug Sample, um, Nick's contact information. And Nick and Doug touched base, uh, and last I heard, uh, from Doug, I think last Tuesday. Um, the contract had not yet been finalized, but, um, Doug relayed that he and Nick had talked and it was forthcoming, so hopefully that comes through very soon. If Doug hasn't gotten it already in the last week.
Um, so I did a little digging on that too, and that goes to the next item under the, the zoning, we, the grant was awarded, but the council has not ever voted on awarding the contract to a consultant. And the current council is not going to vote at this point, knowing that there's a, an upcoming change in council, so they're waiting.
So Eric, the, there's a contract with DCED in the borough, and then there's a separate contract with EPD.
Right, so, we had the RFP process about two years ago now, and went through a series of interviews and had identified a top contender. But that, there was no vote ever taken on council to, to formalize that. Um, and, and actually select um, a contractor, select a consultant, or award a contract, so with the current council waiting for a new council to take over. There won't, we won't be able to take action on that until January, at the earliest, because there's a lot of other things that are on the agenda for the reorganization already, so it'll probably be at least until the second meeting before that gets on the agenda. There's really not anything else we can do at this point until January, until we have a new council. Um, but we, we need to anticipate that we'll be having to, to re-initiate this conversation with a new council in January to get it on their radar and get a vote scheduled and get them, you know, understanding what the process is, and um, I will certainly be, be doing that, I will have to give an, an update to council as a, as a new council member myself, I'll have to give an update to council on what Planning Commission's been doing and, um, what the value and benefit of the zoning project is. But, I would anticipate that we'll also want to make a new motion, probably as a, as a Planning Commission. We probably wanna do an updated motion to proceed with this, and and a summary of, of our conversations and our why we, why we, this is where going forward, forward, we'll wanna relay that to the new council members.
I, um, I totally don't disagree with anything there. Um, in addition to that, do we wanna make a recommendation, we're gonna make recommendations? Recommendation to council to go forward with EPD? Or, do we wanna be silent on that and let them decide on their own if they wanna go forward or not with EPD? Cause they don't have to, nothing's tying them to.
We have motioned in the past to go forward with EPD, and also Ingram has motioned, Ingram Council has motioned to proceed with EPD if-
Oh, they have.
Awarded.
That's funny.
If the grant is awarded, which obviously it has been now. So if, if Crafton Council, the new council wants to change directions and issue a whole new RFP. Uh, you're, they are gonna have to coordinate with Ingram Council and make sure that Ingram agrees.
Right, so, I'll, I'll do this. Should we motion, should we recommend the council to stay the course and go with EPD? It's kinda funny. Kirsten, do you wanna recommend that, Colton, yourself?
We may not all agree on this one, but that RFP was put out two years ago, and no, no member of council who will be asking to vote on awarding that contract was at all involved in the interview process, myself included. I, I don't, but that's something that, that I can recommend, I, I can't vote for that. I, I don't think that we, oh, we can certainly motion it, but I, I don't think that, um, that's going to be something that will be accepted.
Coletta Perry was intimately involved, and she's gonna be the mayor.
Um, as mayor, she won't have a vote.
No.
Understood, but she, she's a presence at every single council meeting. She's there to fill people in on, on historic issues that none of the new council-
I'm not asking what I think the council should or shouldn't do, I'm asking whether the four of us wanna recommend the council to stay the course. And say that, hey, this has been vetted, you know, we've recommended this in the past, we're just re-recommending our recommendation. Um, for you guys to stay the course, because this is taking far too long, let's just get this done. Or, like I said, if you feel strongly that maybe this should be, you know, put out, and, you know, that, that rabbit hole be entered, then that's fine too. So I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to this group to recommend to council to continue with
EPD.
EPD, sorry. Anyone wanna second that?
I'll second that.
I don't agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that's my only concern is that, you know, it's gonna be literally like five percent of the people sitting in that room that have no idea what's going on with this. So, that's my only concern is that, and again, myself included as well, as far as, you know, EPD specifically, but that's my only concern about that.
Well, and that, that's why, that's why I'm forcing us to take a position on it, cause we have recommended to council to go forward with EBT, E- whatever it is, EPD, um, on a number of occasions, I think. Um, so now it's just, well, you're a new council, but this work has been done, so continue it on, and, you know, let's stop with the delays. I don't, I don't know if, I don't know if there's anything that's better that's out there, I sat through the presentations from the finalists. Um, I didn't think anyone was not qualified particularly to do the work, um, we-
How you did that Eric, because I wasn't-
I was on council at the time.
Okay.
Right.
I, I think none, none of the new members of council, um, Colton included, also myself included, were, were privy to those interviews, and I think that I, I, I think it's important that the new council be on board with the project of this scale and scope, we need to not rush it, and I think it's important that they understand it and are, and are supporters of it. And I, I don't think that that will happen without being involved in the, in the selection, and none of those people have been involved in any of this, in any of the selections so far, so, um.
So that's my question then, so what, assuming that this is delayed again, and how is that? Aside from pulling things up, how does that, sort of, affect this, or enter anything with that, or is it just?
You're kind of cutting out Colton, we couldn't hear all of that.
Yeah, it's real distant, your microphone.
Sorry, I'm trying, you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
Um, just, my, you know, where do we go from here if we don't say we recommend EPD to do this, is there something that we have to go through the whole process of them coming back, and again, is that gonna hold things up with grants, like, how does that, does anybody really answer that question, and that we may not even know the answer to that?
I, I know procurement law extremely well, um, so the RFP is still open, um, and there has, um, there has been no selection that's been made. Um, there were four final, there were, there were two finalists, but none, not, the two finalists were never formally moved forward as finalists, meaning the other two were never eliminated, there were four respondents. There's nothing preventing, um, any council, current or future, from using that RFP as a procurement vehicle, okay? So, council could go back to the tape and look at the presentations. Council could review the RFPs that were submitted, read them. Um, they could, um, extend invitations to any of the four respondents, because none of them were ever cut loose to my knowledge. Um, any of the four to come back and re-present, or council could just simply tear up the RFP, start all over. Now, you understand the consequence that that has in terms of timing and delay and all that sort of things. Not necessarily goodwill, right, but the, the reality is, why I'm forcing this group to take a vote is nothing has changed with these four members. I understand that on the other side of it, you're seated on council, but nothing has changed in terms of our opinion in the past, having said now, so please move forward with EPD and make this happen. So now what I'm hearing is, there's a change in that. Now, whether that's accepted with open arms by the new council, taking the recommendation from the appointed body, doesn't matter. That's immaterial to the fact that I'm suggesting that we make a recommendation to stop, um, you know, s- stop waiting and move forward with it. You know, my opinion and discussion on that is, having, having read all four RFPs, having concluded and the, seeing the interviews from two of them, um, and the pricing back and forth and all the other things that have happened over the past two plus years now, um, I don't see anything, um, in any of the other players that was like, oh geez, we're really missing out on that. Um, it seems like EPD is fine and capable of moving forward with this. Um, I think what they've done with the park plan has been, you know, rocky start, but seems like a pretty good finish. Um, you know, I, I don't, um, I don't have any reservation in going back and changing my recommendations. So my motion to make the recommendation is simply a continuation of where I've been.
Um, can we, can we change the recommendation to, you know, for council to go back and look at this, or and if something like to go back and look at all of it, I mean, I'd be fine going back and looking, if you're reading the information or whatever the case may be, whatever you think might be the best solution to that. Instead of possibly waiting to the, not, because then how long is that gonna be before-
Well, right now, we have to vote and decide whether we want to pass over that recommendation, or if we wanna fail that recommendation. Um, in which case you can recommend that we might recommend that council something else.
I mean, that, that recommendation was already made, you know, a good year and a half ago, so the motion you're making is to reissue it, do we wanna reissue it or not? I, I'm not sure if, if it's really fair to try to hold a consultant to a proposal that was made two years again, two years ago either. The extension that EPD has offered expires this month, expires before January.
Right.
Um, but they haven't promised to hold their prices, and there have been a lot of changes in the world and in the economy and in inflation since that time, so to hold any of those proposals to prices from two years ago is also questionable to me for, for either, you know, the fairness towards a consultant or the value of the product we're getting, if we hold to a price that's no longer reasonable.
I, I would be open to amending the recommendation to say that if they can take the advantage of the pricing that had been submitted and worked out, um, that is expiring this month, if they can award that, we recommend that they move forward with it. And again, I'm saying this just out of, in light of expedition, I don't have a favorite, I don't have a horse in the race, really don't care. Like I said, I think all four were qualified to do the job. Um, I'm just saying that it seems like the, the fastest way to be done with this two-plus-year-old, um, race um, is to simply take advantage of it, right, take advantage of what's on the table, uh, move forward as expeditiously as possible. That's the, that's the, the, the agenda behind the recommendation I'm making.
I, I would add that I think it's important when there's a lot of changeover that not everything has to be touched by the new council, I mean, there's some amount of trust that has to be there that a process was followed. And everything's public record, all, all those presentations are public record. There, there's nothing stopping any new council member from getting up to speed on everything that they missed two years ago.
Well, so real quick, so then back to the pricing thing, or you said it's at the end of this month, so even if we do recommend it right now, but that's still not valid to come and say whatever.
It's up to the vendor, yeah, it's a great point.
Yeah, it's up to the vendor, because none of them have committed to those prices at this point, the only one that has committed to extending their price is EPD, and that that extension, you know, they, they did offer in writing an extension to their prices, but that will no longer be valid in January, that will expire.
That's what I mean, so like, that's gonna push it through now, it's like, it's not gonna, the pricing will be valid.
What, wait, so-
The borough hasn't asked EPD to re-extend it again, and we haven't told EPD that we won the grant, which is part of why I think it's important to announce that we won the grant, which we'll get to after this, but it's important to actually be communicative. I, I'm very reluctant to blow this whole thing up again, and start from scratch and potentially run out the clock on how long we have before the grant becomes obsolete. I think it's really rude, to be perfectly honest.
I mean, that's my-
You have no, no confidence in the whole selection committee and the entire process and the previous council.
That's my other part of my concern.
And this is like the latest reason to delay, you're always, everybody's always delaying, I don't understand what the problem is with this project. Nobody will proceed, for whatever the newest reason is, it's absolutely ridiculous, I'm very furious about it. Sorry to interrupt you, Colton.
No, I was, that's sort of a, I'm sorry, but that, I mean, that is my other concern, sort of, if that's another real question, is what happens if, you know, scare a clock on this grant?
Sure, there is a timeline, I don't know what it is until we get the contract.
Right. Again.
And that contract, that's in Doug's hands right now, he's, he's supposed to be getting official notification from DCED. Um, as of a few days ago. From what I was told, unless it hadn't fully been reported, um, we didn't have that official notification yet, so there's, there's no contract with the borough yet. Um, which is understandable over the holiday period. But hopefully that will be in place early January. But we can't officially know, we can't officially, the borough can't officially issue notice until they have official notice themselves, and going through Lydia didn't qualify as official notice, it has to go to the borough and ask to go to the Borough Manager, so he was trying to follow up on that.
Yeah, the Borough Manager got, uh, confirmation verbally, it's just that he doesn't have the, the contract paperwork, which is what he wants to wait for before we issue a press release or a public statement.
Yep, makes perfect sense.
So hopefully that will come. And we can make a formal announcement that the borough's gotten this grant in early, early January, um, maybe even this week. And I don't know, I don't know, um, how soon we'd be ready to make, uh, an announcement, but we can certainly recommend that that announcement be issued as soon as as soon as the borough has all the documentation that they need to do it.
So can we just vote on, on this motion?
Are we going back to Eric's motion?
Yeah, we never voted on it, it's on the table still.
So Eric made a motion, Lydia seconded it, um, I voted nay. I, I don't think that we can proceed that quickly without getting the new council on board, I think that's important to make it a successful project.
I'm, I'm still confused by how that changed, the council changed. I'm, I'm still confused by how that chain, the council change, doesn't change our recommendation in our confidence. So you have no confidence in EPD?
I'm saying that I don't think that we can initiate, that we can ask a new council to sign a contract on. An RP that was done two years ago, that had no action has been taken on since.
I think there's been a lot of action on it. It's been delayed action, but I think there's been a lot of action on it. And at no point was there, was there zero interest.
There hasn't at an official level, because council never, never voted on it. And so delaying that for all that time and then asking the new council to come in and as one of their first actions to assign a contract that. Two prior councils who've been unable to sign, I think that is, I think that's a big ask. I think we need to do more to get.
So I'm under the impression that the reason of the last delay was because of the fact that the funding. It was contingent upon the funding, right?
That's not true. No, this RFP was, was issued well in advance of us going after this grant. Words.
I, uh, right.
It was delayed, we decided to go after a grant.
Right, so, but, but, but my, my point is there've been, seems like pretty, pretty rational causes to delay the award. Until after the funding was received. First was wait, right? We have opportunity to get funding for this. Okay, pause. The second time is, oh, we don't have the funding in hand yet. Okay, pause. We didn't make this round, so let's pause. So we pause the second time and unfortunately, at the snail's pace of bureaucracy, we're now two years down, down the rabbit hole. But I don't think anything has changed. Now, it's up to the vendor whether or not they choose on the pricing. In that case, then. Yeah, makes sense to go out to re-competit, the, re- re-compete the solicitation. I don't know that that's going to happen, but it's, we don't know, we don't know until something forces it. But regardless of who's seated upon the council, it doesn't change the recommendation from this body that. This is, this, this, I like, I'd like the fact that we were in unison. Um, um, in the, in the past on this, that this is an important project. It should get done as quickly as possible and that we had no problem in supporting the selected vendor that we had recommended. So what you're saying is, I don't, I can't, I can't agree that the new council has anything to do with those three criteria. Coming from us as a recommendation, but council can do whatever they want with the recommendation. They can ignore it. You know, they can say, well, that's great, but we want to explore this more, like Colton said, like the reads more about this. I'd like to maybe go see that. Absolutely. I don't have any issue with that. What I'm saying is, um, what I'm hearing is with a split vote here. And this potentially um not moving forward until Rich can weigh in, um, I don't see. Um, I don't see what criteria has changed from this body that we would change our recommendation.
I mean, I, from my standpoint, I, I think two years is a quite a long time, because that's an exceptionally long time.
I'll debate that and say six months because we.
Changes that have occurred in that time are enough for me to think that, uh, of course, it, it merits revisiting. I, I would never say something that long and not revisit it.
We re-recommended this like less than six months ago. I don't understand what changed, except that you guys.
Sounds like something that's very fishy.
There's something you're not telling us, which I'm also not happy about.
Right.
But it was the real reason. That's what I want to know. Because you guys are, are just as bad as this current council with delaying it. They're, they're saying, no, we, oh, we couldn't possibly vote on this. We're about to leave. We're lame ducks. And then you're saying, oh, well, we couldn't possibly vote on this immediately because we're all new. When's it ever gonna happen? Do you actually care about this project or not? It's absolutely ridiculous. I know I, I've made this very clear that I'm angry and I'm not trying to yell at you guys, but it, I, I do not understand. I do not understand why you're not putting the borough first on this. It's an important project, a very important project, and we've already lost out on the K O C. Being something other than a stupid auto mechanic. If we had done this project earlier, we would have had TOD-oriented zoning right along the corridor. And we could have had something cool there. We've already reaped the consequences of not moving forward with this project. And now you're asking me to agree that it's fine to delay again another year or more. And you're not even thinking about how Ingram will be affected. They've already voted to go forward with EPD. This is not solely Crafton Council's decision.
It's also not the planning commission's decision. I mean, I think we're all trying to be open and honest here. And let's try not to be mean to each other.
No one's being mean, but, but something has happened. You're saying two years, it's six months. Something has happened in the past six months. It's changed your recommendation. And you're saying that it's two years old, but I, I, listen, I, I don't buy it. I don't buy it, but I don't really care. Like I said, I don't care. All four of them were qualified. If council wants to go pick somebody else to do it, who cares? Go do it. It's professional services. You don't even need an RFP in Pennsylvania to pick somebody out of the hat. That's a true statement. So they don't even need an RFP to pick somebody. Council can do what they want with it. So, you know, like I said, Colton, you're on the hot seat to put in a vote. We'll move on.
Voting yay for the record.
I, I mean, I honestly, I can see both sides of this, and that's the issue, because I do understand, but Mike, so here's my question. Say we vote to um, to say, yes, we recommend the EPD. Recommend EPD for this. Um, do they, so. Say that the new council wants to go in and do research, which I would like to do. Aside from me, who knows about this ahead of time because of planning commission, when would they have time to go in and do that? To do the research, watch the videos, whatever the case may be, if this gets set on an agenda and we have to vote on it that night. That's my only question of that. So like, when would they take the time to do the research? The, the new people, the ones that have no, no. You know, no, no affiliation with council or anything whatsoever. Cause there's a couple that don't, that are gonna be on next year. That's my question is, when do they, you know, when do they do their research as far as this vote goes?
Recommendation doesn't force a vote. You know, that's a, oh, thanks kids, thanks for the update. And they can turn the page. You can turn the page and go talk about whatever, do whatever you want. Right? But it's a way, our recommendation is a way of providing. Um, um, something is actionable for council to do. Right? And it could be, could lead to exactly the discussion. I think the level of the discussion that Kirsten brings up. I, I don't think is present for this, this audience. I, I don't think it's, it's not material though, Kirsten. I think you have a great point with council. Right? And your disposition about this with council, I think, is a valid one to have in chambers. Say, hey, listen, not everyone's here on this and on board. Um, but what I'm saying is, from this, nothing has changed from the same point of this, my recommendation. For this committee, right? This, whatever we are called, commission, right? I don't think anything material has changed since June, when we said, okay, we're gonna pause. We made the recommendation. Council said, we're gonna pause. And not take action until this is awarded, right? The bond issue, the this, the that, la, 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 la. So once this is awarded, we're gonna move forward. So now it's awarded. We have a political change, seat change in office. I don't think that affects, it certainly doesn't affect my opinion. The work that I did in turning the pages, reading, sitting through the presentation. Um, like, like I said, I think that all four were qualified. I think anybody that goes back and, and does that research, they'll find that all four are certainly capable. Um, one rose to the top. I had reasons for it. I liked the fact that they knew Carnegie, they knew Suickley, they knew our surroundings. They had done like work. Um, I felt comfortable that they knew us and, you know, that was, that was, that was it for me. They weren't, uh, they weren't out of town. They seemed to get it and they, uh, they knew all the people connected um in this, uh, in this sphere to, to, to advance things. And get things done. That's why I went, went and made the recommendation and pushed for it on council and again pushed for it here in the planning commission. So I don't think any of that's changed from my perspective.
That's great, Eric, and that's great that you were able to sit on the interview. I was not. And I'm a little offended that you all are saying that something, I being not transparent by changing my mind now. But it is very different to recommend to someone who interviewed. A consultant to recommend that I will support that consultant and very, very different. That to then say to someone who's never been a part of that process and did not get to be in the interview and say that. I recommend this consultant when I also was not in the interview. For me, that is. Something, no, in June, there were people on the council who were part of that process. That was a different conversation. It is, it is different for me to say, you were a part of this, you were able to be in that interview. And I will, and I am, I am behind that decision. It is very different to say, I'm going to back this to someone who has no, who has no history in it. And who didn't get to sit in the interview. Because I myself did not get to sit in the interview. I did not get that.
But you reviewed the proposals and we discussed it as a body. And we recommended multiple times for council to proceed with EPD.
I saw the proposals. I was not in the interview. I did not get to ask questions. EPD was not my number one recommendation.
O H N was, which, which was part of our process. We ranked them. O H N dropped out. They are no longer interested in servicing our borough for this project.
And that, and that's true, but that was also, that was a whole process that was two years ago. And I, I cannot ethically, I cannot recommend to a new council that wasn't involved. Who, to people who did not get access to more than I had access to, because that previous council did. There are people on that council who were in the interview. There, there will be nobody on the new council who's in the.
It's all on YouTube. That's my point.
I can't, I can't recommend that. I can't go to those people and say, I recommend that you do this sight unseen. I cannot do that. You, you all may vote that you're fine doing that, and we can all vote the way that we choose. I personally, I cannot vote that way. I cannot vote.
My, my vote isn't, my vote has nothing to do with who they are. My vote is based off of the criteria that I bring contextually along with me to the planning commission. You know, that, that's, that's all in, in the open, can be reviewed if, if they so choose to want to pursue it's a recommendation. They can do. They can turn the page over. They can look at the backside, draw pictures of snowflakes for, for all I know. The, the reality is, the reality is, um, I made a recommendation, nothing has changed from that recommendation. If they would like to learn more, I would, I would say that back to the choices. They can go to the tape, look at it on, 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 on the YouTube. They can see the presentation there. Um, if they have questions, they can submit those questions. I'm sure that EPD would be more than happy to either answer the questions. Or to come and give a new presentation. I'm sure that the other players who are on that probably would do the same. Um, I think that it's, 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 it's worth forcing council to think about, oh, gosh. We need to think about this because maybe that pricing does expire, right? And I think that a, an, a split voter, no vote coming out of this group sends a message to EPD saying, you know what? We're gonna, we're gonna raise that price. You know, they're looking for, they're looking for a good partner, um, as well as we're looking for a good vendor, right? And that's, that's where I am with it, like, you know, it, it's fun. It's, it's not a, it's not a contentious thing. I'm, I'm apologizing to you, Kirsten. Um, if this is, you know, that this has caused you angst, I'm not, I'm not suggesting, just saying that nothing's changed from us. If the council wants to receive it differently because they're new people, that's great. Nothing's changed for me.
My, my vote stands. I mean, I, I think it's very important to have strong leadership. And I, I think very important to make sure that we have council on board for that and that, that, that they're on, on board with it. And I think we can absolutely do that, but if we try to tell them to just simply approve something sight unseen that they weren't a part of. I think we are weakening the project right out of the gate. And, and I think it is, I think we all know, we all agree, we all have talked about how important this project is. I think it's important that we do it, but we do it right. We do it thoroughly. We really invest in it. We don't just rely on our consultant to do all of that, but we make sure that we, on our borough end, are invested in it as well. Um, but again, we, we can all vote the way, the way that we see fit. Colton, I think you're the.
So is it possible, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
Possible to amend the recommendation. Does the research and spend, whatever it is, spends a week and looks at the top two even, and then makes a vote. Is it possible to amend that? Cause that's still forcing the issue, right? We still, that's, that's bringing Eric's point, forcing, which you were making the point that we want this to be taken fair. Is it possible that we recommend to council that they do the research, spend whatever time we recommend to do that? And then vote on it at the following, the following meeting, whatever. I don't know if we can go that far with the recommendation, but is it possible that we do it that way?
And whatever you want.
We'll have to vote no to this and then recommend it that way.
Alright, so you're a no. Colton's a no.
As it is, yes, I'm a no. But I'd like to make another recommendation.
Do you want to motion, make a motion about um council members watching the four or even the top two?
Motion that they watch, they even talk to, I don't know exactly where this can be found, but yeah, that's my, that's my motion or recommendation, whatever it's called. Is that they do the research and look at them and then, you know, I don't know if they have to report back to us or. And then we can still make our recommendation after they've looked at them and we've looked at them all again. Talked about it again. My recommendation or motion or whatever is that we have them look into. Search on the ones that are on the table. And that we have done, reach out to, I guess, EPD and see if this person can extend it. Right, cause that's the other question mark that I have to the person stops.
We can keep that separate for now because those are two different things. Yes, we'll, we'll need to reach out to EPD, but your motion for council would be to. Review the four, are, the four proposals that were received previously and review the recordings of the interviews.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
I'm going to abstain until Rich mo- uh, uh, has an opportunity to vote on the, uh, my motion.
To clarify that we're talking about the new council, not the current council.
Correct, yeah, the council. So effective January third.
Twenty, yeah, twenty twenty-two.
So Lydia, do you want to vote on that or are you abstaining? On Colton's motion.
So I'm not opposed to that either.
I think, I think the new council should research everything. Sure, they should look at all of that. I think it's beneficial regardless of whether APD gets chosen. Right away to still have understanding of the history. So, yes.
So those are three, three yes votes?
Yes.
Alright, well, we can definitely, as the, the planning commission can recommend to council. Um, that recommendation can go through immediately, so it can go to the current council. Um, but then it can also be related to the new council, knowing that that's happening very soon. Um, to review those past four, to review the recordings, we can locate the links for where all of those are and send them across. Um. We'll relay that and for the, for what it's worth, that had, that is already in the works, that, that was already going to be done. But we'll go ahead and put the planning commission stamp on making that recommendation.
I would say that the borough office should be tasked with that. You shouldn't have to, you shouldn't have to put your time, talent and treasure into identifying those meetings.
Okay, well, I know this is a tricky one, um, and, and, but I think, again, I think we, we all do want to see this go forward. And we've all put a lot of work into it and the, the important thing is that we need to. So we need to make sure that we don't lose momentum, but that we get, we get. Good support in it. We we don't. We don't start this on the wrong foot and. And lose momentum before we even start. Um, and we we do have. This planning commission cannot make. The contract go through. We are reliant on council signing it. We have two people here on the planning commission who will be on the council. Starting January third, but two people is not enough to make that happen. So we know we have to get. Council members on board and we know that we have to. You know, we have to include education. We need to get them to understand. What has been done, why it's important and why we should go forward with this. And, you know, I I think it's important that we anticipate that that is. That's going to involve a little bit of time, whether we like it or not. It's going to. Involve a little bit of time to make sure that. They understand it and are willing to, that we can get that contract awarded.
I I've said this already, but I very much hope that the new council will be talking with Ingram Council. It's not only their decision to make. It is a joint. Project.
Yeah, that's understood and already know.
And we know where Ingram falls with it. They've already voted to move forward.
Do we want to discuss further? The um. Status of that contract? Or do we want to go on to talking about any public awareness? And we had talked about getting some zoning terms and public awareness campaign. Um underway once we knew that we had the grant. We're waiting on Doug to issue a formal. Um. The formal notice from the borough that the grant has been awarded. But he's working on that and should be issuing that soon. So once the borough, you know, issues their notice that the that the grant has been awarded. Um, we can. We can proceed with doing um zoning terms and public awareness campaigns and getting people aware that this is starting and aware that that it's going on.
I'd like to spend a little time reviewing the public statement I put a draft. Together for. That's what I'm hoping. We can start with as far as the announcement from. Our group.
We can review that if you want.
I.
Do you want to read through it?
I'd like it not to go in the garbage.
Do you want to review it? Do you want to read it out?
I sent it ahead. Of the meeting. I'm hoping everybody re- read it already. I can.
Okay, so everyone has read it and everyone agrees with that as long as you don't name a consultant, which we don't have the authority to do. As a planning commission, we don't have that authority. If you would like to read it out for the record, you are welcome to. If you wish not to, then we can all acknowledge that we read it and already agreed to it. Minus the consultant.
I've already.
I'm not sure what you're upset about here, but if you would like it on the record, go ahead and read the letter you wrote.
Okay, Kirsten, I forgot that we weren't. Showing. The document. So I will read it. Thank you. And I've already. Revised it to omit any sort of mention of any specific consultant. So it reads Crafton and Ingram Boroughs awarded grant to align zoning ordinances with the twenty seventeen Crafton Ingram Pride Comprehensive Plan Goals. That's the header. Craftening and Ingram Boroughs. Are fall twenty twenty one recipients of the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Municipal Assistance Program Grant. This grant will make it possible for both communities to make borough specific zoning ordinance revisions to be consistent with the jointly adopted twenty seventeen Crafton Ingram Thrive. Comprehensive Plan publicly available at. Website. Up to fifty percent of the professional service costs are eligible to be covered by D C E D. The borough's goal is to pursue a modern zoning ordinance that preserves everything good about old Crafton and Ingram. While ensuring that the communities will have bright futures. The twenty seventeen Crafton Ingram Thrive Comprehensive Plan established commercial redevelopment. As well as connectivity and walkability as main priorities for both communities. The zoning ordinance must be adopted to encourage effective redevelopment strategies that will take advantage of nearby public transit. And allow for modern mixed use development in key areas that remain underutilized. Crafton and Ingram Boroughs will work jointly through the process of updating their respective zoning ordinances. To include new provisions and best practices that encourage economic development and redevelopment. As well as walkability and connectivity. The boroughs seek to implement a hybrid zoning code with form-based conditions that will capitalize on key redevelopment areas. Including the Crafton Ingram Shopping Center and commercial areas adjacent to public transit. Form-based codes allow for flexible uses while establishing basic design guidelines and prioritizing existing form and character. Updating the zoning ordinances will simplify regulations and promote policies that allow for market flexibility. Making Crafton and Ingram more desirable to new businesses while ensuring that the communities will weather market changes. Implementing those regulations will capitalize on the community's strong residential base. And local connectivity, including trails, public transit and easy access to employment centers. The process will involve the following. One, review and analysis of current conditions, conduct assessment of current development regulations. Comprehensive plan goals and community vision, inventory, commercial development sites and under or and their conditions. Number two, public input and community vision, host public meetings in person or virtual as circumstances require. To obtain input that will build upon information collected as part of the comprehensive plan process. The craft, the Crafton Planning Commission will also hold parallel workshops to gain input about visioning in the borough. I don't know if that's true anymore, so maybe we should. Talk about that. I'll highlight it for now. Draft ordinances, compose ordinance drafts, separate ordinances per borough based upon analysis and public input. Ordinances will align with regulations set forth in the Pennsylvania municipalities planning code. Act two forty seven of nineteen sixty. Number four, update zoning maps, update borough zoning maps to reflect recommend, recommended and finalized amendments. And then finally, number five, review and adoption each borough to follow the adoption process as outlined by the M P C. That's the end of the the announcement. Does anyone? Want to start with any comments?
It's great. The um, the parallel workshops, um, um. Are you saying because that was contingent upon a particular vendor? Um, EB whatever, or just things that we were intending to do as a group?
I just don't know. With the timing and. Everything if we. Are guaranteeing that. Maybe we could say May, May.
Yeah, it's just say plans to, right? Intends to.
Intends to hold.
I intend to. Am I speaking out of turn? So I want to tend to.
The public input was a part of the scope. That was in the RFP that. That all respondents committed to. Um, I mean, given the changes in the world over the past two years, it's completely. Fair to think that we might need to revisit how we. How we word that. But. I mean, that item, the public input and community vision, that was in the scope.
We're talking about the the part where the Crafton Planning Commission intends to hold parallel workshops to gain input.
Yes, would be. Addition. Addition to or supplemental to anything a. Uh consultant might do. Right? So you're saying, yeah.
So the question is just whether we still intend to do that supplemental work or. Whether we want to just. Leave it as what the consultant would be required to. To do.
Yeah, that one's tricky because I think we would like to. I mean, I think that would be ideal, but we also don't want to detract. Or confuse anyone. Um, with what the consultant is doing. And so I think. We would want to see what the consultant. Specifies for what their process will be. And then. And then set what our schedule will be and if we're going to do anything additional or. Or if we'll simply be supporting during whatever the consultant is already doing.
Well, why don't we just add a sentence to it? Once, once a cons, once a consultant facilitator, whatever word you want, vendor is picked. Um, you know, we'll, uh, we're here, the playing commission intends to support. Um, the the needs of said vendor, right? That would, that would, you know, put us not in conflict, but singing from.
Planting Commission intends to support. This effort, you know.
Yeah, it's even easier. Yep.
This effort, meaning the public input and community vision category.
Yep. Right?
Sure, that sounds good.
Okay, I made that change.
Yeah, overall, I. I thought it was really well done. This is great. So I don't have any. I don't have any other comments. I thought it was fantastic.
So can, can we? I don't know if we need to. Recommend that the borough. Send this out or if we're allowed to do that once the contract is in place. Or if we need to have the current council review it before. It goes out. But I'd like to motion to have it move forward in some capacity.
From my understanding, we can't issue it ourselves, but we can ask that the borough issue it. And it doesn't need council's review. It can be issued by the borough manager. That's my understanding. Um.
Let's do it then.
To recommend that.
We certainly can recommend that it be issued as soon as possible by the borough.
Yep.
So I'll make that motion, we motion to recommend that the borough issue this press release as soon as possible.
I'll second it.
I agree.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for doing that, Lydia. It was. I think that's really well written. Do we want to talk further about? About the um zoning terms and awareness public campaign? Or do you want us? Come back to starting to release those once there's actually a contract in place. Which has been roughly what we've been talking about in the past. You know that that there's a draft that Lydia has worked on. Of materials that are.
Talk about it. Once the contract's in place and once this. Um, release goes out. I think it's a logical extension to announcing that we got the grant, but it's. It'd be kind of silly to start doing any of the. Term. Definitions and things like that ahead of.
Yep.
The rest of the pieces needing to fall in place.
Totally agree.
That's my opinion. I don't know what everybody else thinks.
I think that sounds good. I think that makes sense. It's going to be really great to have those things ready. Ready to go and to be, to have the planning commission involved. In promoting this and in educating people on it while it's going on, but it does make sense to wait until we at least have the contract. Well, do we have any other questions or?
Nope.
Or conversation items on this? I know, I know this is a tricky one. I know it's it's going to be. I know no one wants to delay and hopefully we'll get this moving forward as soon as possible. Come January.
Yeah, I hope so too. I hope all the education. For the new council. Is helpful in them understanding how important this is. And why it's important to move forward with sooner rather than later. It's a, it's a main goal of the comprehensive plan.
There is one other thing. I didn't put this on the agenda. Um. There's very little to to really formally put on there yet anyways, but we were contacted. A few weeks ago, Doug was contacted by. Um, two firms, including one of the, including the firm that did our comprehensive plan. Um. There is a set of designers that would like to offer Crafton a. Design charrette, a good design session focused around the busway and the properties around the busway would be a free. Visioning, community visioning service, um, that they're they're offering to do for free. These are some of the same people that were involved with the comprehensive plan that were involved with the um. TOD plan that was done through Connect and Port Authority a few years ago, and they would like to come back and do a follow-up session with Crafton. Um. So. They did reach out to Doug a few weeks ago and then Doug directed them to me to talk about the possibility of setting that up so that's something that we will look into um come spring. Um, when we probably even starting, starting in January, we can start talking about what is the right timing for that. Um, that was exciting to hear that those two companies, um. Whether the entities from from Pashak who did the comprehensive plan and from. Um, people who are involved in the the TOD plan that was done by Connect and Port Authority, that they would like to offer Crafton a. A community revisioning session where they come back and they look at. Um, you know, revisiting the community and and some of the. Giving some direction on how to apply those ideals from the comprehensive planet from the TOD plan.
You said the name was a Pashak, like P A S H E K?
That's right. But so so far, that's, that's all there really is to report that they have, they. A couple of people reached out to Doug and said that they would like to offer this to Crafton. Um, and then he directed them to me, so we had a conversation about doing that. Um. I'm on board with it. I think it would be great. We talked a little bit about timing and trying to make sure that it is. Um timed in pace with our zoning project. So that it's is complimentary of that, but it's not detracting from that. Um. So I think we would like to get the zoning contract in place before we set a date for that other community visioning. But that's something that we we certainly can. Can start planning for and would love to hear the planning commission's thoughts on and get, you know, get us better connected if we move forward with that. With setting up this. Community visioning. Exercise.
So curious, is Pashak do um zoning work as well?
I believe they do.
It's interesting.
I don't know that much about all of the different works they do. Um, I believe they do zoning. They did do our comprehensive plan. Um.
I don't believe they um. Proposed on our RFP.
They did not.
From what I recall, I don't think they were strong in the form-based zoning. Form-based codes. Work that we were calling out explicitly in our RFP.
And I don't know if there are any further questions on that. I don't, I don't have a lot of other information to give other than that they've. They've expressed interest and offered to come back and do a a free community visioning workshop as a follow-up to some of those previous products that were done. So. Um, Doug thought that was a good opportunity. I heard about it. I thought it was a good opportunity. Um, I don't know what the planning commission thinks. If you'd be interested in. Um, collaborating with them to get to select a time and get that set up. Um, I don't know if you all agree that it would be best to get the date for our zoning project, you know, get a contract in place and get. That formally scheduled. And then. Schedule this so that it aligns with that, but doesn't detract from that. That was my thought, but I, you know, I'm open to hearing what all of you think about that.
I I'll suggest that we invite them to the uh January meeting and then we we figure out some dates and move forward with the. Uh workshop.
Invite them to the January planning commission meeting?
Yes.
Would you do that even if we don't have a contract finalized? Would you do that even if we don't have a contract finalized? At that point?
Well, here's what I'll say. If Crafton um screws this up and doesn't go forward with zoning. Um, then that would be a disappointment in the new council. Um. I don't think that's going to happen. I think that, you know, um.
I don't think it'll happen.
Right. So I, I think, I, I think that it's a logical assumption that this will move forward. And it's only, it's a simple up and down vote once, um, it's, uh, once it's, it's decided upon. Now, it may be delayed if it has to be sent out to re. Reprocure, but I'm pretty sure that. Well, I don't know what, what the, the, the borough wants to do with its professional services dollars, but I can tell you that they don't need to. Um, so the point is this could be fast-tracked by council or this could be delayed by council. I would say that. Let's move forward in the, um, in the wild and reckless abandon of inviting them to January. To discuss the workshop. And if we find out that council delays this a year. Then we'll, we'll cancel it and appreciate the time that Pasha spends with us next January. Does that sound like a plan? I think it'll be fine, don't you?
We can invite them in January. I, um, I, I certainly. And again, I, I don't want to be speaking out of turn here. This is my opinion. I don't, I don't think that this will be delayed a year. I, I do think that it's very plausible that it might take us until February. Um.
Sure.
To, to get new people on board. I, I don't know if we'll have a contract signed by January. That seems pretty.
The only voting meeting is January seventeenth. You got reorg on the third and tenth, so there's no, there's very little opportunity. For anyone to actually, like you said, do the homework, you know, whether we recommend it or not, to do the homework. To make the vote to do all that. I don't see that happening by February, um, at the earliest anyway. Um, but that doesn't, that doesn't, um. That, that doesn't hold us back from continuing to advance the planning. We've been assured by council in, in three iterations, right? Um, assured by council that. Uh, zoning is important to the comprehensive plan, therefore zoning is important to the community, therefore zoning is important for us to take on. So I think we should say, um, well, we've been told that once the, once the money is in the grants and and all the things are done. Um, this will be moving forward. So I think it's fair for us to make that assumption. And I don't feel like if it doesn't work out, that we have wasted Pashek's time. Um, because even without it, even if it delays a year, it's not, right? We all know that's not. Um, even if it delays a year, um, this is still good to engage the community. So that things like the Knights of Columbus don't happen with the VFW that's for sale next door, right? Be pretty funny if they put in a coin-operated car sales machine, um, at the VFW. Wouldn't that be funny? So I, I just think that, um. We, we can probably take that meeting, don't you?
So if you, if you all are happy to go forward with that, I mean, it certainly doesn't hurt to talk. We can invite them. Um, we can invite the two people who were involved. It was Jenny Usman from. From Pashek and Breen Maschiota from. Uh, previously of Port Authority. She's no longer with Port Authority. They were talking about doing this potentially through their firms or potentially through a. Um. I don't even know the right word for this. I don't know if it's an official nonprofit or just a, a design group. Um. But there, there are various groups in Pittsburgh, like Design for Pittsburgh or Women in Design, and I can't remember which one they, they mentioned. But they, they mentioned that it, it could be done through this, like nonprofit group, or it could be done through, um. Through their firms and that's all just a conversation that they're, they're interested in starting with us to see what we would like. Um. So we can invite them to come in January and talk, talk more about what they would like to do and give our ideas for what we think would be suitable. For format, for timing and schedule, for promotion, for what's in the discussion, et cetera.
Cool.
All right. Should we go on to the master, the parks master plan, uh, master site plan update?
Yes.
Okay, survey number two is underway. Uh, hopefully everyone's seen those posted on social media. There was a, um. An update that went out from Savvy Citizen with the link to survey number two, and it's also posted on the borough website. Uh, we had an open house. What date was that, Eric? It was December sixteenth?
Well, maybe.
Eleven?
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
I think it was the eleventh.
Kirsten, we lost you.
You lost me?
Yeah, I think we lost you. Oh.
I'm still here.
Maybe it's my connection. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm, I think. Yeah, it was the, it was the eleventh, December eleventh. Just checking my calendar. December eleventh was the open house. Uh, it was a cold and rainy day, so we didn't get a huge crowd, but we did get, I think, more people than we. Had initially anticipated. Um, and we got some pretty good feedback. People have been, we had a. Pretty good response to the first survey that the consultant put out. Um. Around three hundred responses. In the few weeks that that was open, and then the second survey. Um, shows the same drawings that came out of, that were showed at that, um, that were showed at the open house. Shows concept plans and ideas. There were a few tweaks that were made for this second survey since the open house. Those tweaks reflect feedback that was heard at the open house. Um, but for the most part, the feedback wasn't anything, you know, hugely different. There was a lot of positive feedback and some small tweaks here and there. That will go into the report, um, and the narrative, but, um. There were only a few things that were really kind of high-level changes that actually changed the concept plan. And so those changes went into the, um, current iteration that's out on the website through that survey. The survey shows concept plans for each of the, for each of the sites and then has a series of questions where people can rate. Um, whether they like it, whether they don't like it and why. That'll be open and through, um, January through mid-January. And because I'm not home right now and I don't have my notes here, travel plans got delayed. I don't have my notes in front of me, but I think it was the, the, um. Sixteenth, I think we meant to keep that survey open. Eric, do you have the date in front of you?
Let me try and fix this. Is that working now? Is that working?
Yeah, I can see.
You hear me? Okay, next Friday, I think.
We were keeping it open through the council meeting, right? Through the weekend after the council meeting.
Oh, you're right. Yeah.
Reorg meeting, but the actual, the full council, third typical, you know.
Yeah. I got the calendar.
January thirteen, we were keeping the survey open through the weekend after that.
Right.
Which would be January sixteen.
Yeah, sixteen, seventeen, whatever that.
Right. And then the next steering committee is on January seventeen, so the survey will close by then.
Yep.
That gives people the chance to hear about the survey, not only on social media and through Savvy Citizen, but to hear about it at that council meeting on the thirteenth. Um, ask questions if they have questions at that point, and then still have a few more days where the survey will be open.
Yep.
Um, beyond that, the schedule. Um, the schedule is that the consultant EPD is starting to put together a draft report now. Using a lot of the background information and starting to fill out the outline. Um, but they'll be, will be reviewing a more thorough outline of the report and finalized. Ideas for those concept plans on January seventeenth, which is the next steering committee meeting. Um, and then a draft of the report will be assembled and shared for council to review in February and for the. Steering committee to review in February, and the goal is for council to have a final document that they can review and approve at the March voting meeting. And the reason for that, the reason for having a final document that's ready for council to approve. Um, at their March voting meeting is that that then positions us to be able to, um, apply for grants in DCNR's April grant cycle. So projects that come out of that report, projects that, I know are within our parks, that we would, anything we would like to upgrade in our parks that's included in that report. We can submit in April for grant funding based on that report if it's already been accepted and approved. Um, by the beginning of April. So that is the schedule. Eric, do you have anything you want to add?
I, I'll just say, I, 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 I found it fabulous to go through the whole process. Um, the, um, the, the, the reality is there's no money. Um, grants are one thing, but grants come with a match and, um. The, the existence of matching dollars to the tunes of millions of dollars does not exist in our teeny little borough and municipality budget. Um, so the max, um, that's out there is what, two hundred fifty K, five hundred thousand total with the match, fifty percent match? So, um, I mean, you guys are taking the survey, seeing the plans, you look at the pictures. There's millions of dollars worth of investment there. My biggest concern about this whole thing is that. We've painted a picture of, of, of Crafton, um, that is fantabulous. Um, and when it comes down to what we can afford, five hundred grand, we don't even have that in our budget, right? Um, you guys know that. Um, five hundred thousand dollars, the two hundred fifty thousand dollar match, um, isn't going to go a long way toward it. So I worry, um, that there's a little bit of a. You know, social backfire from some of this. Um, um, in the fact that, oh geez, you know, we painted this, this happy landscape and we could afford a matchstick. Right? Um, and there's disappointment in the community. So I, I hope that we can, we can do something from our world to help people understand that. Well, there's value in dreaming because. We have to be shovel-ready for these opportunities that come by. You know, stimulus and other dollars and things like this, they are real, but if you're not serious about being able to do something and. Act quickly, meaning you have a plan in place. I, I'm not sure how we can convey that message. You know what I mean? Selling that message to people. Is going to be far more difficult than gathering input as to whether they want a BMX track or a, you know, climbing wall. In their backyard. So I think that's the, the really hard work is, once this plan gets accepted. To help people realize that, wait a minute, these aren't promises and deliverables. This is a kind of a wish list of what we, what we aspire to become.
Yeah, and that's a, it's a pretty good, a pretty good recap of what a plan is. It's a. It's a wish list that by having it on there, now you can go after grants to help you fund it. But it doesn't mean that we're going to get all of it, and that certainly doesn't mean we're going to get all of it in any one year.
Well.
We go after whatever we think we can afford year by year.
I, I think when, you know, uh, having sat through the meetings, um, with the, the, the. Committee, whatever it's called, Parks Steering Committee. Um, I saw for the first time when it was, you know, two hundred fifty thousand dollars was brought up. I saw the, the body language and the deflation within the room of people who've been involved in it. When that reality kind of sunk in, the slouching of the chair and the, you know what I mean, that, that, you know, somebody popped the, popped the balloon. Um, I worry that if these are people that are close to it and understand it, have that reaction. When the community kind of sees, oh, what a lovely plan, but we can't afford to do any of it right now, but what a lovely plan that. It doesn't fall onto the, the they scenario. I don't know who they are. I've never met they. But it always seems like they are trying to do something conniving and otherwise, um, um, disenfranchisement, uh, for dancing franchising for the community. And it's not happening. So I just wanted to be, you know, really, really, really candid about the fact that. We should probably think about things we can do from the planning commission standpoint to reinforce, Kirsten, what you just said, that a plan is a plan. You know, it gives us the opportunity to go after those dollars, but it doesn't guarantee the community that we're going to get those dollars.
It's also a ten-year plan.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it is, it is looking forward and everything that we shared at the open house. I mean, everything that the consultant shared at the open house, because the planning commission has not been driving that, that project. Um, but everything that was shared. Is not necessarily going to make it into the final report.
Right.
Because the part that they're working on now is starting to, um, put dollars. Put, assess the cost of each item that was discussed. And this next round of refinement, we'll look at that costing. And then decide which are the top priorities that we put into our plan, which are the things that we, we want to prioritize, that we think we can. Really focus our, our efforts on funding, because the more focused we are, the more likely we are to get funding. Um, if we're too focused and we leave things out, we don't have the ability. It's harder for us to add them in later. But if we're too vague, it also. Doesn't put us in as good a position to get funding for, for the things that we would like to do. So, um. The difference between what was shown at the open house and what goes into the final report will be a layer of refinement that. Puts real costs to things and identifies priorities that are within a, a realistic timeframe and budget over the next ten years.
Yeah, I, I, I think, um, you know, personally, when I talk about it, I talk about it in terms of implementability. Um, you know, we need to be able to think about, you know, the next decade in terms of what, what, what feasibly can we implement? Thirty million dollars spent on our parks is not going to happen. Um, however, um, there can be substantial investment into our parks. Um, there can be substantial co-investment from our community partners. Um, I think that that is where, once this plan is adopted. That is, that is where this commission, right, the planning commission can really excel. Into, into help bridge the gap between the public understanding of, wait a minute. I thought the plan said we were getting Kennywood in the valley. We're not getting Kennywood in the valley, right? Um, the plan was about ideation and creation of a plan, um, so that we can go after things that are shovel-ready. I think. Helping to engage the community beyond the, the engagement of the consultant. Really is a great place for the planning commission, um, to, to, to take a, to take an active handle. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And I think that's a role that we'll, we'll need to find ourselves playing much more clearly and obviously throughout the zoning as well. I mean, with this parks site plan project, the, the planning commission wasn't. Wasn't involved with getting any of it started. We did get two of us on the steering committee, so we've been able to do these downloads. Um, during each of our monthly meetings, but it has not been a planning commission project. If we do zoning, it will be much more. A planning commission, you know, originated project and. There won't be as much involvement from other committees. Um, moving it forward, it, it will be really important for the planning commission to be. Taking a, a, a leadership role in. Communicating with, with the community and, you know, being very clear what's happening and why, and making it very clear who we come to with questions. Um, and, and keeping people. Informed and involved along the way.
Cool. All right. Um, I don't have anything more to add on, on the parks. Do you?
Not particularly. Are there any questions about the. Parks Master Site Plan? And that's the, the rough update. What's going on with that? I think it's a pretty, a pretty. Comprehensive update, but are there any questions before we move on?
I don't have any.
Okay, well, I put review of November minutes on there. Um. Just in case we would like to look at them, we shouldn't be voting on those until we have Ingram's review. And we don't have Rich here to, to review them either. Um. We can come back to that at our quarterly meeting unless anyone would like to review those for any reason today.
I'm good.
Will be, we'll be voting to approve them at our quarterly meeting with Ingram next. Um, final item is citizen comments. Looks like we still have no citizens on the line.
I'd like to say that Colton has a funny note.
And then our final item is to move to adjourn.
And can I ask? Colton, you had maybe some news? Is that something you wanted to share?
Oh, yeah. Um, so I have put in my, uh, resume.
I can't hear you. I don't know if it's my mic again or.
Yeah, cool.
Can you hear me better now?
I just think that takes my ban with the way the camera, but.
I'm sorry. I, I think it's just my. So, um, unfortunately, um, I, I did put in my resignation from my. So my seat may have already been up, but if not, it's gonna be up. So, um, I will no longer be on. Probably be my last meeting. Um, but it's been a pleasure working with all of you guys and I give it.
Alright, Colton, we still don't really hear you very well, but I think we got the gist. Colton has announced he's resigning from the planning commission.
What was your target date?
Not a hundred percent sure. Once council, um. I guess, or accepts my resignation, I guess.
Got it, okay.
So once council accepts your resignation, we'll have an open seat. Um, and then we'll. We will um, be accepting letters of interest. You know, there are a lot of open seats on, on other committees as well, so there will be. Um, acknowledgement from council as well. We're putting out letters of interest on the Borough website and. We here in this meeting can say we'll be soliciting, we're likely to be soliciting letters of interest once that. Resignation is accepted. Um, we'll probably talk, we'll put that on our agenda in January as well. In the meantime, if anyone knows anyone who's interested. Can spread the word.
Thanks, Colton, for all the time you, you spent.
Yes, thank you, and it's been a pleasure working with you guys.
It's been a pleasure. Pardon the nose jokes. Sorry, passing the time.
Thank you, Colton. Alright, well, do we have a motion to adjourn? Do we have any other comments before we do so? Anyone, anything else we'd like to add?
No. Motion to adjourn. I think we have one, but I'll say it again.
Alright, well. We are adjourning at seven fifty-eight. I hope you all have a wonderful new year.
You too.
Hope we have lots of good news and um, momentum going into the, into the new year.
See you guys.
We'll do our best to make that happen. Have a great night, you guys.